Good evening, everybody. Please rise and join me for the flag salute. Thank you all for coming.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for the record, of our staff missing is Mark Freiberger and Councilman Judith Dunley. At this time, I entertain a motion to excuse Judith's absence.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absence of Judith Dunley and Mark Freiberger.
A second?
Okay, a motion was made by Councilman Lemley and seconded by Councilman Johnson to excuse the absences. Any discussion? Well, here's Judith. We don't need to worry about it. And Mark doesn't need a motion, so we'll just move on from here.
We can't that.
We can't, that's Starling, okay? Now, we move to the consent calendar. Item three. I have items A through E, and council, you know the drill. Motion was made by Councilman Judith Dunley. Do I have a second?
Can't.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Carnegie to accept the consent calendar items A through E. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it carries unanimously. So, up next, we have some fun. A special presentation by Helen Rasmussen, who is the Director of our Skagit 911. Welcome home. And we're all yours.
Sorry, getting my clicker here. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Sorry, I have my back to everyone. First off, a little introduction. My name is Helen Rasmussen. I'm the Director of Skagit 911. I was hired as the Director May of 2015, so still getting my feet wet in that position. I've been employed there since November of 1998. I had a 20-year career as a dispatcher. Included in that was I was the training supervisor for three years, a supervisor for 14 years, and then the operations manager for three months, and then the Director. So, I've been there for quite a while, and I've seen the growth of the agency, the growth of your agencies. And what we want to talk tonight about is Skagit 911 and some of our needs. But just for fun, we thought we wanted to start out with a short video. Aaron Berg came up with a great idea of doing a video showing a dispatcher doing their work. Well, we couldn't quite put that together in a week. So, what we actually have is a picture of our dispatch center on the very bottom, and then one of our dispatchers, so you can kind of see how the console is laid out. There's a short video here. It's only four minutes. And it was created by NORCOM, which is the North King County Communications Center. But it shows, it gives a really good look at what dispatchers do and what their jobs require. So, see if you could hit the play button. It should have sound. And I'm not hearing sound. Okay. We have technical issues. We can just go on with the presentation. So, sorry, you guys don't get to see it. It's kind of cool. It's kind of fun. But we'll just go on to our presentation about Skagit 911. Okay, so just a little bit of history. Skagit 911 came into being in October of 1998. Each dispatch, or each agency had their own dispatch, and then they had a central fire and aid dispatch for the entire county. So, the consolidated center pulled employees from each of those agencies under one umbrella. The goal in that, part of the goal, was to centralize things. It would cost less to have all the equipment in one place, all of the personnel, things like that. Okay, so let's see if I can work out the clicker. Okay. So, our governing structure, and I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. Some of it's kind of confusing. We are governed by the Emergency Management Council. The Emergency Management Council consists of all of the mayors of the towns and cities and the three county commissioners. So, those are my bosses. So, underneath that, we have the Director. And if you look straight across, we have an advisory board. And then we have a fire EMS technical group and a law technical group. The law tech is all of the police chiefs. And then the fire EMS tech is fire chiefs, fire commissioners. And they are, they report to the advisory board. What we do is we go talk to them, and they help us set our policies. They help us set how we do business, how we answer the radio, how we dispatch. So then the advisory board works with us on putting that together. And then they make their recommendations to the Emergency Management Council itself. So, we have an operations manager, a technical services manager, an executive assistant, and an accounting administrator. We have four dispatch supervisors, six lead dispatchers, and 28 dispatchers. We have a records department because we have all of the warrants and protection orders housed at Skagit 911 for all of the agencies in the county. We have, we do our training in-house. So, we have a training supervisor. We have trainers and trainees. And then, under the technical services manager, we also have an information technology lead. And he manages our networks. So, a little historical timeline. From 1998 to 2003, we had full funding from the user agencies. So, a budget was created based on the staffing and operating needs. And then costs were distributed to the users in a three-tier model based on call volume. So, however many calls we dispatched, your officers or your fire department, to a call, a cost per call was set. And that's what each agency paid. In 2004, the community voted in a 1/10 of 1% sales tax. And this was, this was created for infrastructure needs. Present, when I became the Director in May of 2015, the first thing the, my governing board asked me to do was find a new funding model because everybody recognized that the funding model was broken. It was not working. So, I went out to five other centers that are about our size in Washington State and asked them, "What are your funding models?" Some of them couldn't even explain them. The directors said, "They're so convoluted, I couldn't even explain this to you if I tried." But we took what they gave us. We worked with the advisory board. We worked with a financial planning group to come up with a new funding model. So, that was presented to the EMC, our governing board, and approved. So, in this model, 85% of all fire costs are directly billed to EMS. And that just makes billing easier. We'll kind of get into that a little bit further on. And then, this was voted by the EMC in 2016 to be implemented in 2017. And if you have questions as we go through, feel free to ask. So, going back a little bit, in 2004, the 1/10 of 1% sales tax. Monies are, were supposed to be used solely for costs associated with the finance, design, acquisition, construction, equipping, operating, emergency communication systems and facilities. So, the 1/10 of 1% was great news for us. This is where we could put aside that money to pay for the 911 phone system when it needed to be replaced. Radio systems, radio towers, building out the radio infrastructure for the responders in the county. And then internal needs, the uninterruptible power supply generators, computers, and things like that. So, we share a building with Skagit County EMS. And then us and the Department of Emergency Management. All three of us have outgrown the building, our space in the building. So, I've got some pictures for you here of the dispatch floor. It's very crowded. Our console furniture where the dispatchers sit, they're 18 years old and they're obsolete. We can't get parts in for them anymore. We have 14 911 lines to answer, but we only have nine positions to answer them at. For operations, obviously, we've outgrown our current space. If you look in that bottom left, the room view, all of the file cabinets in the center of the room are full of warrants and protection orders. And there are seven other file cabinets kind of shoved into corners wherever we could put them. So, we've outgrown our current space. And the records storage for warrants and orders limits. I could put three consoles in the center of that room, so we would have additional staffing and a place to put them. But because we're housing the warrants, I can't do that. The picture on the top right was some temporary wiring that was put in in about 2007 that was actually, came up through the floor and attached to the file cabinets. So, definitely doesn't meet electrical code. Another picture of the floor. The top right picture shows you the wiring spaghetti mess that we have between the consoles. It's kind of scary. Over the years, not having our own radio people and IT people, we had vendors coming in, the vendor for the phone and the vendor for the radio and an electrician. And they would do all sorts of things. So, a lot of these wires, we don't even know what they're for. We have found wires wrapped with not electrical tape, but athletic tape. Anyways, we call this the doghouse. There's six of these in the room. So, it's kind of frightening, and we're beyond electrical codes. We are also at maximum capacity for electrical. We have critical equipment such as the generator and the UPS that are in need of replacement. We have no shipping and storage area. We've built, you know, we've got cabinets in the hallway taking up space where we store office equipment. This is our IT guy's office and where he builds the computers and stuff. It was a shared office or a shared conference room for the entire building. So, when the county said, "You can't be on our network anymore. You need to get your own right away," you're like, "What?" We didn't have a person. The county has always managed that for us, and we didn't have any place to put that person. So, we can still use that for small meetings if we have to. Normally, we just go out to other agencies and say, "Do you have a room for us?" This is where we train our employees. You'll notice the trainer station is set up on a little rolling cart with a PowerPoint and a laptop. The room is very crowded. It's in a 1970s-era portable unit that we purchased from Burlington Police Department for $1. The electrical and HVAC systems are inadequate. We can't run the coffee pot and the microwave at the same time because it trips every breaker in the entire building. Commonly, we call it a fire trap. So, this is where we train our employees. It's very uncomfortable. We have an air conditioner in the room as well as a heater. So, it's very difficult to train there. When we go back to user agency fees and the 1/10 of 1% sales tax, you'll see that, for example, in 2001, the user agency fees, and this was that per-call fee that each agency paid was, in 2001, it was close to $45. In 2003, it was about $38. When the funds started coming in from that sales tax that was to be set aside for infrastructure needs, they dropped the user fees to $5.81 per call. So, what they did is they took the entire amount of money that was coming in from that 1/10 of 1% sales tax, and they applied it to the budget. There was nothing set aside for any of the infrastructure needs. There was nothing set aside to replace equipment as it broke. It all went to covering the operations of the 911 center. So, basically salaries and things like that. So, sorry. Sorry, let me back up a sec. We're having technical issues with this thing. Okay. The effects of supporting 911 primarily from sales tax revenue, again diminishing reserve funds. In 2013, we had to take out two separate loans from a local bank. Capital projects, there's no money for capital projects. Salaries for employees are supported by the sales tax. One of the loans that we took out in 2013 is because our internal radio console system failed. So, not the external towers, but how we actually reach the responders, how we tone out calls, how we talk to officers. That failed, so we had to take out a loan to replace it. We are still paying on that loan, and it won't be paid off until June of 2018. Our 911 phone system is currently failing. We've had two failures of the system itself within the last two months. And we're very lucky that our phone system is actually working at this point. There's large communication gaps in the radio infrastructure in parts of the county. Cedar Wully has dealt with a multitude of problems with the radio infrastructure in us trying to talk to their officers and them trying to talk to us. Prior to the tower project that was done over the last, what, two years, Karen? There were areas in Cedar Wully where the officers could key up on the radio. We had no idea that they were even out there. Because they couldn't talk to us, we couldn't hear them. So, those areas still remain. And I'm sure there's probably one or two where it's not great in the Cedar Wully area. Some of the particularly bad areas are Alderbo, Day Creek, Rockport, and Marble Mount. So, in terms of our facility, it's outdated and it's too small. It's no longer up to code. We have failing backup power supplies. We have failing consoles. Our heating and air conditioning system is inadequate. The wiring and electrical has reached maximum capacity. We have dispatchers, when they walk across the room and plug into their console, they get such a bad electrostatic discharge. I had one person that had it so bad he had to go home. So, we mitigate that by spraying Downy on the carpet. So, not the best place to be at times. Another major issue with the current billing system. If you look at the graphic, it shows the total billable calls. So, again, we're billing on a per-call basis. It's right at about 100,000 calls per year. However, all of our calls, our call volume in and out is 261,000 calls. Yet, we're only billing for 100,000. So, that's a third. You know, a little bit less than a third of our actual call volume is not a billable call. So, this includes phone calls that we make for the officers. Your officer needs a tow truck, we call a tow truck. If they need public works, we call public works. If they need flaggers, they need traffic control, they need fire, they need parents to come and pick up the kids at a juvenile party, we call the parents. We make their calls for them. So, this is kind of where that higher call volume comes in based on what we're actually billing for. So, there's nothing in this current billing system when we talk about billable calls that talks about everything that goes with that. Your officers make hundreds of traffic stops a year. Well, that's not a billable call, but we still have a dispatcher sitting there, you know, running the plates and running the drivers and pulling the warrants, calling the jail, all of the things that come with that. And we do this 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, the planning for a new funding model. Again, the EMC tasked me with coming up with a new funding model. And they're very committed to fixing these problems that have taken years to really show what problems they are. So, again, we brought back five models to our governing board, the financial planning board, the fire EMS tech, as well as the law chiefs. We analyzed them, we refined them. We took pieces of this funding model and pieces of this funding model, and we came up with a new funding model. So, I'm going to go over this very briefly because it's kind of confusing. The first thing that we did is we thought, "Well, we need to see how much it costs us to operate." So, we created a funding model with what we call cost centers. So, we have an administrative cost center where we put all of our costs for the building and the utilities, or myself, you know, the administrative staff, all of the things that go into just doing business. And then we figured out, how many employees do we have to staff the consoles? And then we looked at, what are the consoles for? For example, we have four full-time law consoles 24/7, but we only have 1 3/4 fire consoles 24/7. So, why is fire paying the same amount as law when they're taking so much less resources? We figured out what each employee costs us. So, I'll go forward a little bit, maybe. So, this is the actual funding model itself. You know, on the left side, we have what our budget is, what our expenses are, and then the three cost centers. If you look at the top center, that's our personnel cost breakdown. This is what it costs us every year per dispatcher. And then we looked at how many fire dispatchers we have. So, we have five or six fire dispatchers, but we have 21 law dispatchers. So, again, why is fire paying the same amount as law when they're using so much less in the way of resources? So, we went back to these cost allocations, and we figured out the most fair way to do it, because some consoles are shared. For example, Cedar Wully and Burlington Police Departments share a frequency. So, they share a dispatcher 24/7. So, basically, three a day. Anacortes shares with the two tribal agencies, actually, three tribal agencies. One is a contract agency, so they're not listed. But Mount Vernon Police Department and the Sheriff's Office have their own consoles. So, they're not sharing with anyone. So, what we looked at is, what is a fair way to do that? Anacortes should not pay the same amount that the Sheriff's Office is paying because they're sharing their dispatcher. The allocation that was decided on, honestly, by the law chiefs, because no matter what we do, you know, somebody kind of got screwed in the very beginning of this. So, they decided, we would do 50% CAD call volume and 50% funded officers. When we look at funded officers, you know, the Sheriff's Office has a whole lot more than Cedar Wully. Again, Cedar Wully shouldn't be paying the same. So, what it broke down to is, so, for example, Cedar Wully, they have 17 officers, you know, and 8,000 calls per year. So, they should only be paying 9% of the law costs, and that includes the 21 dispatchers. So, same with the fire side. On the fire EMS allocation, the fire and EMS already put money into a fire infrastructure fund. And when that was originally set up, it was set up based on 50% CAD call volume and 50% assessed value. So, instead of trying to create a new fire allocation, we just used that. So, again, each fire department will be paying based on the resources that they're using. So, going back to this, you know, one of the things, so, then you look at your administrative costs. So, what we did is we have a law cost center and a fire cost center. Law comprises 70% of what we do. So, they pay 70% of the administrative cost center. And then fire pays 30%. We are still using, even going into 2017, we are still using the majority of that 1/10 of 1% sales tax money for operational needs. What we need to do is move away from using all of that to where we can fund our infrastructure needs. So, this is the first step in doing this. The budget increase, as you've probably all seen, is fairly significant. And everyone in all of the committees agreed, "We have no choice. We have to do this." The other thing that we did is we created an equipment reserve and replacement schedule. It goes out 30 years. If we put $206,000 per year from that tax money into our equipment reserve and replacement fund, we will fund our equipment replacement needs for 30 years. So, in five years, when the radio system needs to be replaced again, we will have the money to do that in that reserve fund. So, on the back of that sheet, which you guys don't see, it actually shows what year we have to replace everything and how the fund goes up and down on that replacement schedule. So, I just wanted to finish out. I know that was confusing, and this is a very brief look at it. But I wanted to finish out with this. The Skagit Valley Herald ran this ad in the, or article in the Sunday paper, and it said, "Skagit 911, here's our emergency. We're understaffed, we're overworked, with no financial help inside it." So, in 2014, our dispatchers worked 17,000 hours of overtime. So, if you divide that between about 30 people, that tells you that our dispatchers really don't have a life. They work mandatory overtime. We actually have in our union contract that we cannot mandate them on their last day off unless there's an emergency. So, they work constantly. They're exhausted. So, one of the things that we have managed to do over the last couple of years is get more staffing, train more staff. So, our overtime is going down, you know. But again, we're looking at systems that don't work. When we look at our mission statement, it's "To provide the most efficient means of dispatching emergency response throughout Skagit County to better serve the citizens and protect life and property." In order to meet that, we have to have equipment that works. We have to have dispatchers that are not exhausted. You know, they, our staff does a phenomenal job, you know, just with what we have now. But our current crisis, again, is our failing telephone system. So, for two years, the state of Washington has been telling us, "Yep, we're going to fund your phone system. We're going to replace it." They said the same thing to Watcom County, Island County, and Cowalitz County. On October 7th, they said, "Oh, sorry, we're out of money. We're not going to fund your phone system." So, today, I had to go to my board and say, "We have no choice but to get a new phone system." When we have lines that are failing and people just cannot get through to 911, it's unacceptable. So, we got approval to do that. And of course, we have to finance this through the vendor because the state is not coming through. They're paying $70,000 for it. But the phone system itself is $565,000. So, I'm open for questions. I know that was kind of involved, and it took me a year and a half to learn our funding model. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Helen, you shared today some of what went on during the Cascade crisis and how the phones were backed up. Could you share that with everybody else here?
Sure. I don't have slides for it. What I can tell you is, from the moment the shooting, we got the first call for the Cascade Mall shooting, in the five-hour period, five-hour period that night, we just went from when it occurred to 11 o'clock at night, we processed 675 911 phone calls. In the first five minutes of the incident, we processed 66 calls, while another 36 calls got a fast, busy signal, which just means that all the circuits are busy. When the mall incident happened, we had six dispatchers on the floor. We had one on break. And that was our staffing that night with seven people to manage an incident like this. The call volume, obviously, was immediate. And one of the things that goes on with our phone system now is that we have no expansion capability. We have nine phone consoles, actually 10. We have one in the supervisor's office that's only phoned. But we have no capacity to expand. So, within 10 minutes, we had five people, including myself and the operations manager, in the center that are trained to take 911 calls. But we didn't have a phone that they could sit at to take the calls. To make this even worse, the radio dispatcher, Jacob, who was managing the Burlington frequency when this happened, he took the initial call. So, the minute they said, "Shooter at the mall," he just dispatched it. Entered a call, tried to process that call, but the minute he put this out on the radio, the radio traffic just inundated him. So, he couldn't answer the phone. So, of those people, take away one because he couldn't... So of those people, take away one, because he could not manage the phone. The requests from the law side, mostly from the law side, there were some from the fire side, but the requests from the law side to make all these phone calls was kind of crushing. We had a dispatcher that had just gotten off work, maybe 40 minutes before, I believe she was still in town. The supervisor on duty sent out a page that said, "Active shooter at the mall, we need help." So Julia got back there very quickly, she plugged in with Jake and started doing all his resource calls on her cellphone. She was like, you know what, you just manage the radio, I'll make all the calls. So she stayed double-plugged in with him for, I want to say about six or seven hours, after already looking at 10 hours. So that was just, kind of gives you an idea of what we're dealing with. The call volume for something like this is incredible. So the 911 center can never be stacked to manage an incident like that, but this is where we have to look at, where is our capacity to expand, our ability to answer the 911 calls? Those 36 calls in that first little bit that got a busy signal, we don't know what they were. I don't know if somebody was having a heart attack, we don't know if there was a domestic, maybe somebody was calling in a fire. So we had people there that could have helped manage this. So this is one of the things with our new phone system. We will have 12 consoles on the floor, we will have three in the front offices where we actually have CAD computers, so that, you know, even on a day when we're just super busy, or a windstorm or whatever, we can have people in the front offices answering phone calls. We will also have six full phone consoles out in our academy training room, so that we can actually train them on the equipment they're going to be using on the floor, but that gives us our capacity. We could have brought in six more people to sit out there and answer 911 calls. So I don't, for any of you, I don't know if you've been to the 911 center, or had a tour, or had the opportunity to go in and put on a headset and plug in with a dispatcher and see how they do their work. We love it when people do that. And I think it's really important to have an understanding of how we work, when we're asking you to make, you know, pretty heavy decisions. So that offer is out there, we're happy to have you come in, you know, and Mayor Wagoner can just make arrangements if any of you have that interest.
Any other questions, Council? I should say that later on in the agenda, we'll be looking at the revised in our local for 911, which is associated with this. Any questions from Council?
I had just one, or two, actually, maybe they're sort of similar, but you mentioned the 1/10th money, and then is there still a per-call fee?
We are currently still, in 2016, we are still doing a billable call, and the price per call, I believe, right now is $13.70.
Okay, so when, if a new funding mechanism goes into supporting the Skagit 911, what happens to those monies after that?
So the first thing that we'll do is, from the tax money, you mean?
Yeah, the 1/10th, or will there not be a per-call after that?
Well, there won't be a per-call fee.
Okay.
It'll be based on console usage, so again, how many officers you have and how many calls. So what we'll do in 2017 is we'll take, which we've already done, the number of your funded officers and the number of your calls in 2015, so the last full year, and then whatever that number is, Cedar Woolley will pay, sorry, what was that, 17%? Going back to the slide.
Whatever it was.
Whatever it was. So it takes that away.
Okay.
So it covers the costs for what you guys are actually using.
And then you said that the 1/10th money that goes into needs down the line, goes into like a?
So right now, from the 1/10th of 1% sales tax, we get about $2.5 million per year.
Okay.
What that is supporting right now is the entire Senate. So what we will do is we will start with the money that we're putting into the equipment reserve and replacement, because that's one of the most important things. I should not have to go get a loan to get a new phone system, we should have that money. Well, honestly, the state should pay for it. But when we have to replace our generator, I don't want to go get a loan for it, we should have that money. So the initial piece of that is from that tax money, before we apply any of it to the budget, we will take out that $206,000 every year. And more than likely, each year, that will go up a bit, and we'll be able, because we also have to replace our reserve funds. Our operational reserve is supposed to be $1.4 million, and right now, it's $300,000. So funding the center the way it has been funded all these years has just driven down the reserve funds. They've pulled out of reserves for everything. So did that?
Yeah, thank you.
Be back.
You're talking of upgrading your electronics. Is your physical building short on capacity?
Yes.
And you're looking at a new location, or just expansion of where you're at?
So, good question. What we have is a three-to-five-year plan to remodel the 911 center, so we can get more consoles in there. So instead of having nine consoles, we'll have 12 within the room that we're in. To do that, we have to rewire the entire room. So this is our three-to-five-year plan. We are hoping that maybe sometime in the next year, EMS can find another place to do their business, because EMS does not require any infrastructure, you know, basically just a business phone system. And then we could take over their portion of the building, that will get us through three to five years. So what we're looking at now is our three-to-five-year plan. We need to look out further, because we need to either expand that building, or we need to move, or we need to build a new building, to make it through, say, a 20-year plan when you look at, you know, the population growth and things like that.
Thank you, Helen.
My God, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I should add that today, we authorized the first of four payments for that new phone system. So I don't know when those are going to get in, maybe you can give us a time, Helen. When the phone, the money that we authorized today at the EMC, how soon does that translate to actual new consoles?
So the phone, and along with this, the phone has to be installed and operational by June 30th of 2017. That's a very short timeframe for a project of this size, but we're up for it.
Very good. Well, thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll get out of here here.
Okay, we are to public comment period. So I'll remind everybody that we have some public hearings this evening, so if you have comments on public hearing topics, there will be three opportunities to speak on those. First one is the property tax levy, the second one is a utility tax on domestic water, and the third will be the utility rate ordinances. But if you have something else you'd like to speak on, now is the time for that. So I'll remind you that we're limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address, so we have that for the record. And remember, you're addressing the council and not each other. So any takers for public comment period? Yes, sir?
I don't understand what you, when you say utilities, because I came here for the sewer and the water, you think you'd be?
Yes, ma'am, that'll be the public hearing, so that will be coming up next, so you can say for that. And if you think I've missed you, I will let you talk. Anyone for public comment period? Very well, seeing none, we will move on to the public hearing, and I'll read the rules for that. So as I said, there's going to be three times to speak tonight for the public hearing. Please let me your testimony to the issue at hand. I will be calling names from a list that signed in, but if you didn't sign in, let me know, and you'll still get to speak. This is your opportunity to provide testimony on the record, not a time for debate, or to question individual members of the council. You're limited to three minutes per person, and just one time at the microphone per topic. So to be fair, these rules will be strictly enforced. And thank you. I will now open at 7:39, public hearing.
If I can get organized.
Thank you, Julia. On the topic of the property tax levy ordinance, and I have two names on the list, Mr. Green is first.
Howard Green, 309 Reed Street. Again, I come in here, I'm on a fixed income, and you want to raise taxes. How am I supposed to pay for it? I'm maxed out. Am I supposed to go get a job or something? I'm tired of this. I am literally maxed out, I'm going under. And it seems like you only listen to people that have money. I don't. You don't listen to people that don't have money. There's lots of people in this town that don't have money to fund your silly projects It's very, very irritating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Next on the list is Philip Murray. Bill left. Anybody else want to speak on the topic of property tax levy ordinance? All right, well, before we move on to the next, I'll close the public hearing at 7:41 on that topic. Before we move on to the next, I would remind everybody that this council has not raised property taxes in nine straight years. And I talked a little bit about my philosophy on how we do get money because costs keep going up last city council meeting. So at this time, I will open the public hearing on utility tax on domestic water at?
Were you going to have the council possibly take action on the property tax ordinance stuff?
Oh, you're right. I am out of order, thank you for reminding me that. So item six, council, on your packet, beginning on page 28, and is this your?
Patsy, although there are no changes from the first reading to the second reading, and the recommended action is a 0% tax increase, 0% tax increase, so.
So council, do we have any discussion, or is anyone willing to make the motion here?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, for ordinance 1856-16, an ordinance, let me get back to it.
Property tax.
An ordinance for the City of Cedar Woolley approving the property tax levy of an increase of 0%.
Second. Here, the motion was made by Councilman Sandstrom, and seconded by Councilman Lumley to enact ordinance 1856-16, an ordinance of the City of Cedar Woolley approving a property tax levy at an increase of 0%. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? In previous years, we've, when we've done this increase, we've also negated the future use of it. Is that something we would do at this point if we're interested?
By that motion, you did negate any banking.
Okay, great.
And what that means for the public is, sometimes when you bypass tax years, you can bank the amount that you bypassed and then use that later. So what that leads to is maybe a very large increase in future years, and this motion takes away the power of this council, or any future council, to bank that amount and increase the taxes by the banked amount. We do have a banked amount, Patsy, from when?
I'm not 100% sure on what year it was created. It's around 40-some thousand dollars at this point in time. The Department of Revenue has informed us that no one can un-bank what has previously been banked, it just stays there until it's used.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we move on to item seven, which we will also have a public hearing on. These are utility rate increases, and this is a first reading for the council, beginning on page 35 of your packets. So I will not reread the instructions for the public hearing, but I will open the public hearing at 7:45 with respect to utility tax on domestic water, that is items 7A through D. Oh, I'm sorry. It is on the rate ordinances, sewer, solid waste recycling, items A through D. So Helen, did you want to speak on that?
On the P V rate increase?
This is city utility rate increase. Yes, ma'am. Including sewer, solid waste, and stormwater rates.
Do I have to stand up? I just had to get surgery.
Oh, no, ma'am, we won't make you do that.
We have, we live on North Reed Street, and when we have heavy rains, there have been quite a few, our back of our property, our neighbor's property behind us, and the property of the neighbor on the long side of it, our properties are flooded with water. And the neighbor's, his front lawn got so full, it came over our driveway. And then we have a big bunch of water coming down the side, and then the neighbor on the back behind us has, water comes clear into his backyard, and it just sits there.
I see, okay. So you have a runoff problem, and that's maybe something that we can talk about with our Public Works Director?
On the Berdocks Street.
We should get her address.
Which is behind our place. They put in two big houses, and there's going to be two places put in there. But where the apartments are, they say that that, they're not retaining, or maintaining that reservoir, wherever it is over there, and we get a lot of water.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Can you say your name and address for the record, so I can get in touch with you, please?
Helen Suthers, 220 North Reed Street.
Thank you, Helen. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on that topic during the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close public hearing at 7:47. And council, if you would go to page 35 through 48, this is a first reading. Are you ready?
So first, I just want to note that there's a missing page in your packet. It's on your council days, the ordinance for sewer, that begins on page 37, is two pages, so the, there's, the back page is missing from the packet. So what you've got here are actually four different ordinances, and a recommendation to adopt three of them ultimately. For all three of the city-owned utilities, the mayor's balanced budget includes a rate increase of 1.78%, which is the measure of inflation from the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, for Seattle, Brimerton, and Tacoma, June, over June 15 to 16. That's the measure of inflation that the city has used for quite some time. The city established a, kind of an annual process of making inflationary adjustments in order to avoid the large stair-step increases that happen if you don't make any adjustments, where you keep the rates level for three, or four, or five years, and then have a quantum leap in one year that can have such a huge impact on folks. But this 1.78% is intended to maintain the system at its current level. So for sewer, the rate ordinance is just that, it's 1.78%. For the solid waste and recycling division, it's 1.78% plus an adjustment for tires, refrigerators and freezers, and wood waste, that reflects the city's actual disposal costs. Stormwater is more complicated. We've talked for years now about our stormwater utility and its lack of funding to accomplish its basic mission. This year is no different. The 2016 budget for? The 2016 budget, for example, has $0 for collection system maintenance, and our stormwater utility operates about the exact same number of lineal feet of collection system as our sewer system does. In our sewer system, we spend about $300,000 a year maintaining pipe and manhole structures. In stormwater, we've got all of that, plus some very large cloverts, 96-inch cloverts that are at the end of their useful life. Some of them are no longer eligible for rehabilitation process, but will require actual replacement with, you know, fish passage-type bridges or cloverts. So the mayor's balanced budget includes a rate increase for stormwater of $2 per month per ERU.
Even though?
You have in your packet two different ordinances, one that would raise rates by $2, and another that would raise rates by $4. Neither of them were particularly appealing. The mayor chose to include in his balanced budget the $2 rate increase, because it begins to take a step in the right direction. That $2 generates about $150,000 a year in revenue to the stormwater utility. That $150,000 is spent in three ways. $60,000 of it backfills a property tax subsidy that is not included in the 2017 budget to stormwater. It backfills a $30,000 subsidy from the state of Washington that was taken away from us and our sister cities this year as part of the NPDES Phase II compliance. All of you know that the federal government, through Clean Water, passed along a regulatory requirement to the states, who then generated a permit, which we call the NPDES Phase II permit. And there's one for Western Washington. It's about this thick. It's a permit you don't apply for, it just shows up, and it's yours. It's like a free gift. And it essentially requires cities to regulate rainfall. I mean, at the end of the day, we are now in the business of regulating where the rain falls, what it collects from the point that it hits, you know, the world, and ends up into the waters of the state. And this is pretty complicated and costly for us. So just in the last few years, as NPDES Phase II has ramped up, we've started to more effectively maintain the collection system by vacuum, jetting, TVing, and mapping. So we have, for probably the first time since the system was installed, a fairly comprehensive understanding of our system. We have to run out and regulate people who are washing their cars. We have to inspect annually all of the stormwater facilities in the city. A number of them are private, a number of them are public. And this is everything from grease interceptors in the parking lots, such as one behind this building, to the ponds that you see and the roadside ditches. Some of the issues privately owned stormwater facilities are lack of maintenance, which can result in difficulty getting water conveyed into the system and backups for neighbors. So it's time-consuming and expensive work, and we just haven't funded this utility to do that work. And it is a new utility. You know, this was a function that was traditionally born of the general fund, and it was born of the street department. And as it became a bona fide utility, as the requirements of the state became greater, more significant, more costly, the city council first instituted a stormwater utility rate, I believe in about 2007, and I think we came in at about the $2 level. So, you know, we've started out slow, and we're just moving along, obviously doing our level best to comply with the requirements of NPDES Phase II and the United States Clean Water Act, but recognizing that it's a struggle, and that we have approximately zero residents who want to pay this rate. It just is not a popular fund rate to pay. So, that's the story on stormwater. It's a 1.78% increase in the ordinance that the mayor has requested that you consider, and the ordinance that's in your 2017 mayor's balanced budget raises rates by $2. So, oh, and I guess I don't think I mentioned, the third way that money is spent is $60,000 goes into a brand-new line item for collection system maintenance. We believe that number should be $300,000. We don't believe that you can do that this year, because it's just too large of an increase for the community. So we want to make a difference, we want to start getting involved in doing that kind of work, but we recognize it's going to take time to get the dollars necessary to do what we really need to do for this system.
Thanks, Aaron. And I think we, council, that if you listened carefully to what Helen was talking about in her reserves and maintenance funds, you saw what happens when agencies or cities like us fail to prepare for that. So it's the same deal with wastewater, or stormwater. Any other questions from the council? This is a first reading, so no action tonight. Item eight, utility tax on domestic water ordinance, also a first reading. So at 7:56, I will open a public hearing on that topic, same instructions. I see, Helen, did you say everything you wanted to say?
I was mostly interested in the sewer thing and standing water.
Yes, ma'am. And I will contact you to learn more about your specific problem. Howard Green?
I oppose it.
Can you give me your address again? I know it's repetitive.
Howard Green, 309 Reed Street, 45 years. I oppose it.
Thank you, sir.
For the same reason, lack of funds.
And Philip is still gone. Did anybody else want to speak during the public hearing on this topic? Dr. Holland?
Yeah, this is a particular item. Tim Holland, I don't live in the city, but I am a part owner of the veterinary hospital just to the north of here.
Can you give the address, please, Dr. Holland?
That address?
That address.
200 Murdoch Street.
Thank you.
And this is addressing the stormwater fees on buildings that have been built recently. The veterinary hospital was required to construct catchment systems, one to catch all the water off the roof, and it comes down into the runoff, and then it's put into these huge cisterns that are underneath the yard on the north side of the building. And then there's a second system that collects all the water off of the parking lot, all the paved areas runs into these different sewer drains anyway. It comes down from there, it goes into an oil separator, separates that off, and then the water that's left over goes into another cistern system to prevent runoff from that property. The cost of installing that, the contractor estimated it cost me $25,000 to $30,000 to put that in. And it seems fair that the buildings that have put in these kinds of catchment systems should receive some sort of credit on the stormwater fees that are charged, because as far as I can tell, we really don't add to the stormwater runoff in the way that you're normally trying to handle it. It just goes into those cisterns and then percolates into the soil. So, it just seems fair to the businesses that have installed those kinds of facilities, and future businesses, which I'm assuming will be required to put in the same kind of thing down the road, that it's just fair to those people that have to invest that amount of money. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak on this topic? Okay, at 7:59, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, item D, pages 49 to 52 in your packet.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to that, is there, I have a question based off of Dr. Holland's comment. Do we know how many businesses have a system similar to his? I mean, is there a way to find that out for the next reading?
Well, I think we probably could find out. I don't know if we could find out by the next meeting, but there's another class of users that would be similarly disfavored under a one-size-fits-all rate structure, and that would be all of the people in town who neither have systems nor any community system. So there are people who have no storm drainage in their neighborhood. In fact, we may have one here tonight. So when it rains, the water simply puddles up in their yard, and there's nothing that happens. Now, they pay the exact same rate as somebody who has a storm drain right in their front yard. And the logic behind that is that part of what you're paying for is a collective system that serves all of the city's, you know, streets, roads, and sidewalks. But when I said that I've found a grand total of zero people who like to pay this, you know, I was serious, and there's no question, there's inequity, in my mind at least, with a one-size-fits-all rate structure for folks who have invested so much to deal with their water on their property, as well as for people who don't get any benefit at their own properties of a community system, to pay the exact same rate as somebody who has stormwater running by, you know, their property. So I don't know if that's something, Mark, if you wanted that number, I guess I would caution you, if we get you that data, it doesn't, you really can't just plug it in. You know, this is just like our conversation last year on sewer. We need to look at the rate comprehensively, so if you make a rate adjustment here, there will necessarily be a rate adjustment there. And so, understanding how that works, and then I would also tell you, for people who have private systems, they also generate a specific cost to the city in regulating those systems. The annual checks of maintenance logs and so forth. Some are no big deal, it's easy. Some become long-drawn-out processes of encouraging the maintenance that they're required to do.
Outside of the cost that they've had to pay to build that infrastructure, did they have to pay any permitting to the city that might offset the cost? I mean, like, did he have to pay?
Part of the building permit.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. And then also, he pays an annual fee to his own contractor to come out and do whatever inspections may be necessary, so, you know, and clean out the catch basins and whatnot. So these are definitely gifts that keep on receiving year after year.
Did I answer your question? So, item eight. Tony, what are you doing?
Upsetting everything. Tony's Plains, 714 Saffron.
Okay, let me first understand, are you speaking about the current topic or something else?
No, we're on the stormwater thing.
Yes. And I closed the public comment period, but I'll allow it since we have a small crowd here tonight. Go ahead.
In the case of my property, all my stormwater goes into Brickyard Creek. None of it goes down the city drainage or anything else. It all goes into Brickyard Creek. Again, so I'm on the short end of the stick in regard to paying for stormwater, that I don't contribute any to. It just goes in the creek.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
Well, and if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, that's a great example. The city spends, I think we're hitting close to $30,000 a year on Brickyard Creek maintenance to ensure that the water that flows off of Tony's Plains property makes it to the Skagit River. So, you know, this is an interconnected, interrelated system, and none of it's cheap. And Brickyard Creek in particular is an annual maintenance project from one end to the other to keep it mowed, cleared, and available for the water to convey through. And we saw what happened when that work didn't get done. We had neighborhood flooding, you know, over off of Independence and McGargle. So it's sticky, and I recognize the interest you're raising. I think if that's something the council wanted to seriously discuss, we'd want to do it in the context of a more comprehensive rate study, where you would consider classes of customers, and just recognize that there's a teeter-totter, because at the end of the day, you still need a defined amount of money to run the utility. All you're deciding is who pays which slice of that pie.
And I might say regarding the more elaborate systems, like the doctor was talking about, it does vary somewhat, but in most cases, those systems still discharge to our drainage system. It's not like they are self-contained. There are one or two in town that don't discharge because of the soil conditions. Skagit Farm Farmers is an example of that. But most of them have outflow structures that still discharge to our piping system and go out through the system to the stream and then to the river.
Thank you.
And that system was required? That was a required system?
Especially when you're building on a very small site, it gets very expensive being able to handle the amount of water that's falling. And a good example is Rite Aid as well, and Walgreens, and we built it about the same time. The 100% of those sites are covered with pavement. There's no, very little, I mean, 15%, I think, according to ordinance, would be green space. But essentially, all the water that falls on there has to be detained, or it'll go immediately into the system and overwhelm the local area that it's at. So that's the reason technically that's done. And also, there's a requirement to treat certain parts of that flow. Roofs don't require it, they're considered non-polluting, but parking lots in particular have to undergo a treatment process before they can be discharged into our system, because ultimately, it's going to the river. And that's the driving force behind all that we do relating to stormwater, as Aaron was mentioning, all the regulation that has really ramped up since 2006, and so with the Phase II stormwater permits, is the quality of the water that discharges to the Skagit River and the other streams.
And one, you know, just one other interesting feature is, as these new permits have developed, we now have to look at some of these properties like they have never existed, you know, in our lifetime. So you might take a property, and when they do the analysis, you have to assume it's still in, you know, native timber from, you know, 100 years ago, and analyzing the effect. And then, you know, from that starting point, you deal with the water before it leaves, so the water quality and where the water goes. And then we're also being mandated to utilize all of these, you know, low-impact development techniques. So you're going to see, instead of an option of rain gardens, you're going to see mandated rain gardens, and all those sorts of things cropping up. And this is now, will become the law in Seadrill on December 30th, as a result of an ordinance that you all passed, I don't know, I think it was about a month ago, but an ordinance, again, that was not of the city's creative imagination, but of a requirement of the state.
Thank you. So now, let me catch up here, because we had a very busy thing. We did a public hearing on the property tax levy on two utility rate increases. Now we're down to item eight, which is the utility tax on domestic water ordinance, so I think I missed one. And if anyone would like to speak in public hearing on that, I'll open that at 8:08. Any takers? Our lists are a little mushy here. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on item eight, and direct the council's attention to the utility tax domestic water ordinance first reading, page 49. And that is Mr. Bird.
This is actually the same ordinance that the council considered last year at this time, and ultimately did not adopt on a three-to-three vote. The council originally adopted a utility tax on domestic water in 2014, levied a 6% tax. Because of the way the Wenatchee versus Chelan County PVD number-one case lays out the imposition of this tax, the city levied 6% tax results in an actual tax payment of 4.8%. What this ordinance does is increases the utility tax to a rate that results in an effective rate of 6%. And in this case, that increase is estimated to be $33,500 per year. All of those dollars go into the council-restricted Strategic Reserve Fund, which so far has been used solely to advance pay or prepaid debt that the city has, specifically on this building. used solely to advance pay or prepaid debt that the city has specifically on this building.
Does council have any questions? Okay, it's a first reading, no action tonight. And on to new business. Item nine, the 2017 budget. This is a first reading, and before we get into the specifics of that without council objection, the next budget that I bring back for a vote, I would like to add a line item that would include the funding line for air conditioning at the senior center. It's something that we have talked about for several years in the first cut. I didn't think we could make it fit, but it's a very important item to a lot of you here, and Chuck talked to me about it, and we sat down with Aaron and sharpened our pencils and figured out a way that we can at least pay for the capital investment. I will say that the outuse, operations, and maintenance, we're gonna have to be creative, but without objection, the 2017 budget that you see next meeting would include that.
For a new heating and air conditioning, or just air conditioning system? It's not a heat back, it's air conditioning combo? You know, it's just strictly a air conditioning structure?
As I understand it, it's AC only.
Yeah, well, it addresses a couple of things.
It addresses some respiratory problems, you know, we were saying, open the windows, but there's pollen problems with some of the people who use that, and I think, you know, we're gonna be judged by the way we treat our senior citizens, so I think it's time that we take that step, even though it's gonna be kinda tight.
So, the current estimates from which we base the budget dollar amount, it was just an air conditioning system, but if this is in fact in the council's adopted budget, we'll probably take a look at the best available options before we get that implemented, and then our goal would be to get that installed in the springtime, so it'll be available for summer of 2017. And I guess we'll cross our fingers for a hot summer, so we can test it out.
So, that is on page 53 to 62. And is that Patson?
Yes. The mayor's 2017 preliminary budget was presented and discussed at the last week's work session. The preliminary budget is a line item budget. When you print it out, it's this thick. And if you look at page 55, you'll see one of the pages of the ordinance which lists the way the budget is approved, which is at the fund level. So, basically, you would be asked to approve the budget at, you know, that summary level. For citizens who are interested, there are some of these at the back, some review copies. We have them at the finance department as well during the workday, and they're available online. You can review them online, or you can download them and study them as much as you prefer. And at the library, yes, Deborah has a copy or two over there as well. Thank you. All funds have been balanced and are according to council goals and direction. In the packet tonight, there are several graphs and charts. Those are exactly the same as what was given to you last week. I included them this week for citizens in case they, you know, hadn't seen the budget. These are a good summary of the budget itself, and I'd be glad to answer people's questions if they're really in depth, maybe during the week, or you can sit down in my office. But if you have any quick questions or comments, I'd be glad to answer them this evening. And a public hearing is scheduled for your next council meeting, which is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Patson. Any questions from council? Okay. Item 10, I spoke a little bit about this earlier, the Skagit 911 Revised Interlocal Agreement, first reading, page 63 through 90 in your packet. And that's Aaron.
Well, this is exciting. We've been working on this project for a couple of years. Skagit 911 is a partnership of, I think initially, well, it's nine entities, but I think those nine entities represented five independent dispatching operations that were a going concern in 1997. So, as the world of enhanced telecommunications came to light in the late 90s, the county and the cities all realized that it was really not efficient to continue to run independent dispatch operations, and Skagit 911 was born in 1998. Helen gave you, I think, a good history of kind of the budget and process. The original interlocal agreement from 1998 was amended once in 2004 to address a quorum issue resulting from some, sometimes lackluster participation from the towns. And then, in 2014, the emergency management council identified half a dozen or so changes to the interlocal that it desired, and we were not able to get those ratified due to, I think, a strong interest from the legal advisors for the member entities to revise the structure of the entity itself. And that took some time. We have, in your packet, we have a draft interlocal agreement that's been approved by at least one of the nine entities. It'll be on your agenda for action on the 22nd. There are a couple typos that have been corrected since this packet was created, so you'll see those for the second reading. The big change to this is that it restructures Skagit 911 from a cooperative association to a nonprofit corporation, a governmental purpose corporation. And our objective there is really to build an entity unto itself to own the risk associated with what is a, you know, fairly risky operation of a dispatch center. So, that's a big change. There are some revisions to the governing board itself in terms of its composition and how it works. And then, the other big change is to the funding model, which Helen gave you a far more detailed analysis. Really, I think, the conclusion of the technical committee and the emergency management council itself, which approved the funding model, and by the way, Chief Tucker was involved in that process from its outset, was that the old model really wasn't fair. And I think Helen's example is probably the most illustrative, which is the city of Mount Vernon paying the same rate the city of Sejrooli pays, but they get their own console. And if you ever listen to dispatch traffic, you will notice that the Mount Vernon units interact differently with dispatch because they have their own console. So, that's their dispatcher, and if they choose to tie their dispatcher up, that's on them. In Sejrooli's case, you know, we split a console with Burlington, so anything that we're doing is making it so Burlington can't get access and vice versa. So, there's a different, I think, radio etiquette, a different use of the dispatch console, and clearly, a different value in relation to cost. So, this new model, at least from my perspective, while it certainly increases our rates, the increase of rates is necessary due to the expanding technical needs of the center. The model, I think, better reflects the cost of doing business, particularly on the shift from fire to law. So, that is incorporated, the current rate structure's in the interlocal agreement, the new rate structure's in the interlocal agreement. And I've been involved in this literally for years. I sat on the emergency management council from the year 2000 to 2003. I represented the dispatch center back in 2006, and then on loan from the city of Sejrooli here again in 2014 and 2015. So, I've gotten to know that group very, very well, and I think they do a really good job. I think they'd like to do an even better job. I think this will help give them a structure that will enhance their ability to succeed. And I definitely second Helen's sentiment. For any of you who want to do the ride-along, you know, you've maybe jumped in a squad car or you've ridden in the, or hung out at the fire station waiting for a call, go down to dispatch center. Mayor can arrange it, I can arrange it. They can plug you into the console, and, you know, you'll be amazed at how that works, at literally the flow of information from so many channels simultaneously into one human being, resulting in dispatches that are, at the end of the day, really the lifeline for our first responders. So, mission critical, and they really do a very good job. Downside for them is anytime they make a mistake, it is 100% recorded, so, you know, it's out there for the world, and mistakes happen when you run so many people for so many shifts. But they do an excellent job, and, you know, I think Sergeant Harris could certainly add to that. But that's the first reading, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions, council?
I would say for the public, and this doesn't have anything to do with the interlocal, but I remember when 911 came out and it was emergencies only, and you're afraid to touch that thing, but that's not how it works today. So, if it's anything from, you know, pet running loose in the yard and the small things, that's really how we're supposed to do it now, and that's the easiest way for our officers to get there. So, even though it feels funny, like you shouldn't be dialing 911 because it's not really an emergency, that's how it runs now. So, don't feel bad. If you need help, dial that number. Moving on to item 11, ordinance, first reading, RV parking fees, and is that gonna go to Mark, or?
I got a list of them tonight for you.
Lovely.
This is a component of the mayor's balanced budget as well. And this is a request that came from Nathan in the operations division. We did a rate study and noticed that our RV rates were the lowest in the valley, and we've also noticed anecdotally that we seem to be attracting RVs who are kind of just cycling from RV park to RV park to RV park, as opposed to, you know, visiting for limited duration. So, two purposes here. One, we really want to get our parks into the range of the market, so they are available for visitors to the community, and also to generate an adequate revenue to offset the costs that go into running the facilities. So, this ordinance raises RV parks at parking at Riverfront from 15 to $25, and at Bingham, where there's the full hookups from 20 to $30.
Any questions?
Are there no hookups at Riverfront?
There's only a hookup for one, Camp Host.
Oh.
We found it was technically too imfeasible to get sewer hookups down there.
Oh, okay. So, is there water and electricity there?
Water and electricity.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Partial hookups, I guess you'd call that.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to item 12, fourth Wednesday of December meeting, first reading.
Okay, so the city has long held a meeting on the fourth Wednesday of December, right around the Christmas holiday, and we hold it in the lobby of City Hall, 4:00 p.m. We usually bring cookies, and the purpose of that meeting is to pay the bills. These two ordinances are intended to eliminate that meeting, if you are interested in so doing. We'd like to continue to pay the bills, so one of these ordinances authorizes the mayor and the finance director to continue to process the bills that are received in the normal course of business. The ones that would normally be processed on that fourth Wednesday would be paid as usual, and then presented for your ratification at your second Wednesday meeting in January. The second ordinance then deletes the fourth Wednesday meeting in December. And I would also like to throw out one additional idea, which is Thanksgiving week. We, a few years ago, changed the ordinance to make that meeting happen on Tuesday before Thanksgiving, but a suggestion came up this week that maybe it would be better for everyone if you met the week after Thanksgiving to free up that whole week. So, rather than meeting the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, you could meet the Wednesday after Thanksgiving. That's really just a preference issue for the city council of what's convenient. This is a, this is and always will be a busy stretch of time between the first of November and the second Wednesday in December, because of all of the mandated activity that occurs at the end of the year related to the budget. So, we need that meeting. Question's just, do you like it on the Tuesday? Would you prefer it the following week? And the question for this is...
I would like it on the Tuesday.
Okay. And so, that's status quo, so that doesn't require any change. And really, the question for these ordinances is, do you have any concern? They're very straightforward. If you don't have any concerns or issues, then these would likely be on your consent calendar for next time.
Any questions, council? Okay. On to committee reports.
Good evening. A couple things to kind of share with you tonight. We are finally dialing down the last part of our reserve program, so we're hoping to get two more reserve officers put into this year's academy, which is scheduled to start November 30th. Monday night, we got two selected to continue to move them forward off to polygraph and psychological exams. So, hopefully, that'll continue, and then we'll move them into a chief's interview and get them selected in. So, that'll be a big help for us to get that volunteer labor on our department. So, we're looking forward to that. I can't remember if, last time I was in front of you, if our chief Tucker talked about our last two shootings that we had. We have made one arrest, and that was in the one at the, near the high school. So, we have one confirmed with multiple witnesses that put him as the shooter. So, he is currently in jail on a $250,000 bail, which is pretty good for us to keep him nice and safe. And then, something kind of really neat happened, I guess, maybe not the right word there, but Monday late evening, early, or late afternoon, early evening, we were dispatched to an attempted suicide. And family members got texts saying that, you know, this person was despondent and wanted to die. So, we sent one of the officers to the house where the texts were coming from, and then three of us were in our cars and went out looking, and there was, it was pretty chaotic in that we didn't know where they were at. We had a whole bunch of clues and possible addresses within the city. We did feel this was a very serious imminent threat, based on the information we were getting. So, the three of us, of course, it's right at time when everybody's coming home, we literally ran code, lights and sirens, to probably seven or eight different addresses in the city to try to look for this person. We finally located him just outside the city, and we found him unconscious and unresponsive in the car. We had to break down a door to get him out, and then myself and Officer Hannah Wall dragged the person out and gave him aid. And fortunately, today, they're surviving, they're doing well, they're getting the resources they need. Had it been another two or three minutes, I don't think that the outcome would have been as good. So, it was definitely a win for everybody that night, so it worked out well. That's all I have.
Yeah, it was a great perseverance, and you guys really took the initiative and saved a life.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for a great job.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question. I was wondering, just out of curiosity, when you had all those different addresses, do you guys disperse to different addresses simultaneously, or?
We did, yeah. We had to split up our resources to try to cover as many as possible, as quick as possible.
Cool. What was the motive for the shooting?
Well, the shooter refused to talk to us, so, you know, without his attorney, so we can speculate, but until it gets adjudicated, I can't say what the motive was.
Anything else, Sergeant Harris?
No, sir.
Thank you. Todd?
Yes. Last billing, of course, we sent out with the utilities a flyer, a couple flyers regarding home and business addresses, and so hopefully, people have seen that and looked at those. The flyer just describes the importance of a clean, visible address, so that fire and police and, you know, citizens can find their homes in case of emergency and such. And so, that's out there. And we also are pushing for, or handing out a file of life. These are little holders that are magnetized and go on the refrigerators of people, maybe senior citizens or... citizens or such, would put down their medical history, their, any kind of medications that they're taking. So if we arrive on scene, we see this on the refrigerator, we can go grab that, and this may assist in maybe saving a life. And those are available, there's some on the table back there if anyone's interested. And of course, we're handing them out to some of the senior homes and such. And they are, there's some available out on city counter, too, so. We have a countywide MCI drill at Skagit Valley College on the 19th. It's a shooting MCI drill, multi casualty incident. So we'll be sending a crew, possibly two crews to that to participate. And of course, with Chief being gone, we're pretty busy and playing catch-up. And we have an ambulance, of course, that's just limping along, but hopefully we have one on order, and we hopefully that'll get in in time before the other one fails. So that's about it.
Thank you, John. John?
Good evening. So from me, obviously, you can see a plaque that's not usually up here during council meetings, but I thought I'd bring the plaque that the city was awarded by the Washington Chapter of the American Planning Association, joint with the Planning Association of Washington for our northern state subarea plan and environmental impact statement that was adopted as part of our comprehensive plan. So this is a state award for outstanding comprehensive plan in the category of comprehensive plans of small cities. So there is...
And John's being modest when he says the city, because, you know, it's John's team and Jana and the whole group down there. You guys did it, and I'm real proud. Great.
Well, thank you. There's stuff going on in the planning department. A couple weeks ago, took, I think I gave the council a briefing on training I took on floodplain management and explained why it's important for us to have a floodplain manage, keep the city in compliance with FEMA's floodplain management regulations so that people in the city that need flood insurance have that available to them. After that training, I took a certification test, and so now certified floodplain manager, which I hope could somehow maybe help our insurance rates or something, I'm not sure how helpful that is, but at least you can rest assured that there's somebody that has some certification in managing floodplains in the city and helping to keep our insurance rates down for our citizens. And then earlier this week, EDAS, the Economic Development Association of Skagit County, has put together a group to study ways to improve retail in Skagit County. So they put together what they call a retail cluster strategy, various groups of cities and other jurisdictions, not jurisdictions, but the port facilities and some others, to look at what are the needs of each various city and jurisdiction, what are our strengths, weaknesses. So we got together to talk about how that's going to come together, we're each doing a plan for, not really a plan, but analyzing our own strengths and weaknesses in each jurisdiction, and a member of EDAS will come and work with the city, and we'll do, we'll put that together for the city, and then everybody, all the jurisdictions come back together and kind of compare and contrast and compile a list of what are strengths and weaknesses, and go from, starting at the bottom up, looking at how our local facilities and local needs feed into the regional needs and come up with a more of a regional plan for some retail enhancement in the region. And so we're really early on that, and we'll see where it goes. But that was, that started this week, and I think that's all I got for you.
Very good. Mark?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Erin?
I think I'm good as well.
Patsy?
I just wanted to update council that we're looking at the first week in December for the exit conference, for the most recent audit. Between vacations at the auditor's office, it's been kind of hard to schedule it. Plus, just to give you a little information, when the auditors are on site, it's really easy because the audit team, they do all their work. The reviewer comes in and reviews it and says, well, what about this, this, and this? And then they do this, this, and this, and ask us questions. Well, then, when they leave and the reviewer reviews the last few days' work, they say, what about this, this, and this? And so we get emails and phone calls in between other audits and vacations that are scheduled. So it makes the process a lot longer if it's not completely done before they leave site. So anyway, that's kind of why the long timeframe before the exit conference. But you will receive an invitation by email for the exact date and time of the conference, and then you'll later get your, via email, a written, the written report from the auditors.
Thank you, Patsy. Judith?
Nothing.
Jermaine?
No.
Brenda?
Nada.
Wow. Julian?
Yeah, I want to make an announcement, but first, John, a couple of things. Congratulations on the award. That's fantastic. And secondly, the information that you're gathering with EDAS, the community and whatnot, is that going to be shared with the councils, the different councils, and will some of that be dispersed, the information?
It's a little early to see where we're going, but I don't see why that would be a problem to share.
Because it would be great to know how we compare and give us more insight.
I don't know if it's going to be so much compare and contrast, but as much as, you know, analyze our strengths and weaknesses and needs and try to come up with a plan that builds on all of those, builds on all of our strengths to address all of our needs and find a regional strategy. I'll definitely work on bringing that to the council. I don't think this is any sort of secret document.
Okay. Thank you. And then I have an announcement. Actually, I'm on the auxiliary out at the hospital, United General, and maybe some of you are familiar with, a fundraiser that we do. This is the third year that we're doing it. It's called Pearls for My Girls. The money goes to oncology at United General. Last year, we raised $20,000. And we are selling tickets. It's happening this Saturday. It's a luncheon and an auction, and tickets are $30 apiece, and we have really only about maybe 30 seats available. So just for the few women who are here, just to put that out there for you. It's a lot of fun, so bring a friend, come along.
Thank you, Julian. John?
Kind of on a personal and business note, on Friday morning, Veterans Day, the funeral home is having a dedication and acknowledgement to all veterans, and the public is invited. We're having a little program with the Burlington High School Junior ROTC and military organizations from around Skagit County, running a video tribute called Arlington, An Eternal Vigil, about the concept and its construction and the importance of how Arlington National Cemetery has become to our national pride, and it's an involvement with things. Invite everyone to come and join and learn a little bit about our national heritage and how we preserve the right of our veterans, and we continue to do that at 11:00 a.m.
Thank you.
11:11:11. So all are welcome to attend. And for those of you in the room that are veterans, our sincere thank you for providing those services.
Thank you, Eric. Brett?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, down to me. First, I'd like to thank Brenda for running the show when I was in Montana trying to get a deer. Don't ask, didn't get one. Got a deer instead. Speaking of veterans, one of the great things about living on Talco Street, which clearly is not the street itself, is the veterans parade that the kids do. They'll do that tomorrow at 10:00, so it's always fun to watch, and they have so much fun. So if you had a chance to attend that, that would be nice. And then while I was sitting here, I got a text that says, Mr. Mayor, our football team is being escorted out of town Friday at 10:00 a.m. to begin their trip to Pullman. It's the second game of their playoffs, and they've been doing great. We're wondering if the city would help us spread the word to businesses downtown. So here's the first step of me doing that. The boys will be going out of town Friday at 10:00 a.m., and I don't know who they play in Pullman, but they've had a great season. At this time, we're going to have executive under two RCWs to discuss performance of a public employee under RCW 4230.10, Subparagraph 1G, and close session to discuss collective bargaining under RCW 4230.140, Subparagraph 4. It'll be about 20 minutes, and there will be no action afterwards, so I don't expect anyone will stick around for that, but thank you for coming this evening. Have a safe drive home.
And Mark, we will see you tomorrow at Rotary? Very good, sir. Oh, Mark's deep.
I'm so sorry.
All right. We got one over here if you need one. Bathroom? Yep, sure.
Okay, let me get back in. So we've completed our executive session, and we're back at 9:10. I've had a motion from Judith Dunley to adjourn.
Second.
And a second from Brenda Kinzer, and we stand adjourned.
Wait, who is the motion and second? You're the motion. Wait, wait, wait.
Judith was the motion, I was the second.
Okay, got it. So the minutes will so reflect that.